All right, well, let's kick off here with a reading from Message to Thyatira. Make sure your phones are on silent. Just really talk to myself out loud here. All right, so starting chapter 2, verse 18, and we'll read to the end of this chapter. "And to the angel of the church in Thyatira write: The Son of God, who has eyes like a flame of fire, and his feet are like burnished bronze, says this: 'I know your deeds, and your love, and faith, and service, and perseverance, and that your deeds of late are greater than at first. But I have this against you, that you tolerate the woman Jezebel, who calls herself a prophetess; and she teaches and leads my bond servants astray, so that they commit acts of immorality and eat things sacrificed to idols. I gave her time to repent, and she does not want to repent of her immorality. Behold, I will throw her on a bed of sickness, and those who commit adultery with her into great tribulation unless they repent of her deeds. And I will kill her children with pestilence; and all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts; and I will give to each one of you according to your deeds. But I say to you, the rest who are in Thyatira, who do not hold this teaching, who have not known the deep things of Satan, as they call them, I place no other burden on you. Nevertheless, what you have, hold fast until I come. He who overcomes, and he who keeps my deeds until the end, to him I will give authority over the nations; and he shall rule them with a rod of iron, as the vessel of the potter are broken to pieces, as I also have received authority from my Father; and I will give him the morning star. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." There is so much, so much in that letter. Oh, all right. Okay, so following the overland route from Pergamum to Sardis, travelers would head eastward along the south bank of the Cicus River, turn southward over a low-lying range of hills, and descend into the broad and fertile valley of the Lycas. Okay, we can see, let's see, number four up there, that is Thyatira. See that on the way to Sardis. Their journey of about forty miles would take them across the Maesian border to the city of Thyatira, situated on the south bank of the Lycas, in the long north-south valley that connected the Cicus and Hermes valleys. Thyatira was founded by Seleucus I as a military outpost to guard one of the approaches to his empire. The city apparently had an earlier name, but I'm gonna save that one for later. This was a fun thing I kind of stumbled upon, and I'm just gonna save that one. But a legend is preserved that the name Thyatira came about as a result of a combination of a sacrifice of a deer and its running, although scholars have also heard these legends, have come across these, where Seleucus I named the city after his daughter, and Thyatira actually meaning daughter in Lydian. So both, they really haven't nailed that down, but those are the thoughts. "Since it possessed no natural fortifications, it would draw heavily upon the spirit of soldier citizens to make up for its vulnerability. In 190 B.C., the city fell to the Romans, and became part of the kingdom of Pergamum, and then part of the province of Asia. With the coming of stable conditions under Roman rule, Thyatira was destined for growth and prosperity as a center for manufacturing and marketing." Paul may have visited Thyatira and brought the gospel there during his three-year stint in Asia Province, most of which was spent in Ephesus. We see that in Acts, chapter 19, verse 10, and Acts, chapter 20, verse 31. Now located inside modern Akasar, about forty miles southeast of Pergamum, and on the road to Sardis, this was the fourth destination of the seven letters. According to inscriptions found at Thyatira, the city had many trade guilds, including wool, linen, baking, slaves, leather, bronze, pottery, and dyes. And you might already be thinking about what's mentioned throughout the letter, and some of those kind of signifiers there, or the links to the description of Jesus in chapter 1. And if you're doing that, good. An outstanding characteristic of Thyatira was a large number of trade guilds. Oh, yeah, and Ramsey notes that inscriptions, although not especially numerous, mention the wool workers, linen workers, makers of outer garments, dyers, leather workers, tanners, potters, bakers, slave dealers, and bronze smiths. So we actually find those from different inscriptions. One of the major industries was the dyeing of textiles. However, the purple dye used in Thyatira was made from the matter root, which was much easier to obtain, and therefore a much less expensive imitation alternative than the rare purple dye from the murex snail found on the Mediterranean coast. So the dye of Thyatira is called Turkey Red in modern times. And I'm sure that's a quick Google search. "The low cost and high volume made the sale of these dyed garments very profitable. Lydia, who had moved to Philippi in the province of Macedonia from Thyatira, worked in this industry specifically as a seller of purple dyed fabrics." Acts, chapter 16, verse 14. So prior to it being the Seleucid Empire, it was actually the Lydian or Lyden Empire. And so many people, so here's, this is just, this is a free one, total side note, but the name Lydia, many people actually think is much more of an ethnic identifier instead of like her actual name. I know Lydia's become, you know, it's a common name nowadays, but back then, maybe she, like, in Scripture, nameless, but identified as a Lydian because she was from Thyatira. Like you moving overseas and becoming known as the American. Let's see. "An inscription found at Philippi honored a purple dye dealer from Thyatira, who was a patron of a citizen in Philippi, demonstrating that others involved in the dye business, like Lydia, had moved from Thyatira to Philippi and were people of financial means." And that comes from Keener's book, Commentary in the Book of Acts. "It would appear that Thyatira's market extended across the Aegean Sea to Macedonia. Archaeology has revealed little about Thyatira in the New Testament period. Brief excavations uncovered a Roman street and part of a public building, while explorations at the site discovered several inscriptions and coins." So there's, actually, do we have some more of those pictures? Theater and... So, yeah, there wasn't really too many pictures of Thyatira that we could find. Like I said, Google search, but, but yeah, so you can look up Thyatira, there's some really good, and don't discount YouTube, there's plenty of people that have gone to those places and recorded like their own tour of these cities. So anytime, and really, I would even extend that to like, if you're reading in Bible, and you're like, oh, come across a city, like, I wonder what archaeological digs have been done there. Like, look it up, Google it, YouTube, like, whatever, they are all available, and I mean, especially if you're into that thing. If you're not, don't torture yourself. But if you are, if you are, jump into that, so. I think I've ruined my kids because during our Bible reading, that's something that we'll often do, and we'll look that up, and they're just like, oh, cool. I don't know if they're just amusing me, but you know, it's, they seem pretty interested. All right, so coins and inscriptions. Okay, archaeology has revealed, ah, there we go, okay, "has revealed little about Thyatira in the New Testament period. Brief excavations uncovered a Roman street and part of a public building, while explorations at the site discovered several inscriptions and coins. Gods such as Zeus, Artemis, Apollo, Demeter, and Athena were worshipped at the city. And a coin of Vespasian suggests that a temple to the emperor may have existed there by at least seventy-nine A.D." So we have the imperial cult present, as well as all of these other deities. Let's see, "Coins and inscriptions from the city demonstrate the presence of smiths, and particularly those working in bronze." Several coins issued by Thyatira depict Hephaestus, the blacksmith of the gods, using a hammer and tongs to craft a helmet. Other coins show Demeter holding a fiery torch." And so really, as we're naming some of these gods, some of these are ones that I haven't like mentioned before. I really didn't know if you guys were kind of into that or not, like, we went pretty heavy, like, a couple churches ago, and so I was like, oh, boy, I don't know if anybody's gonna be up for like another round of that, because it was quite a bit, and there's quite a few mentioned here, but I will leave that to you to look that up on your own. But yeah, Zeus, Artemis, Apollo, Demeter, Athena, and then we have Hephaestus, or Hephaestus, blacksmith of the gods, mentioned. "But the divine guardian of the city was the god Tyrrhymnos, T-Y-R-I-M-N-O-S, and he's identified with the Greek sun god Apollo, who would be conceived of as the patron of the guilds, and therefore honored in their festivities. And since the trade guilds were inseparably intertwined with local religious observances, they posed a special problem for the economic well-being of Christians." So I mean, you pretty much have most facets of society, like, mentioned as a part of these guilds, right? And there was a certain loyalty that was demanded, not just to the guild itself, but to the god that they were serving. Here we have, so Christ commends the church at Thyatira for their life of active service, so kind of deeds featuring pretty heavily, "but holds against them the fact that they tolerate the prophetess Jezebel, whose influence has led them into an unholy alliance with the doctrines and practices of their pagan neighbors. She would be dealt with most severely, and the church will learn from experience that God inevitably repays on the basis of what one has done." Now, concerning the letter to Thyatira, Himmer writes, "The longest and most difficult of the seven letters is addressed to the least known, least important, and least remarkable of the cities. The difficulty in interpreting the letter grows out of its numerous references to details of daily life that have become obscured with the passing of time and the lack of archaeological evidence that would reveal its past." So I thought that was kind of interesting, coming from a scholar, and just recognizing, I mean, really, this, how severe this letter is, but then Thyatira is just, it wasn't a big city, and it wasn't as well-known as what, you know, many would make it out to be, especially compared to the other churches. Okay, do we have any questions before we start moving into the actual verses? No? All right. Has anybody already started picking up some of these pieces for how they apply, like, some of the references that Jesus is making through here into possibly to the daily life of a Thyatiran, and so, yeah, okay, all right. So, all right, verse 18. "And to the angel of the church in Thyatira write: The Son of God, who has eyes like a flame of fire, and his feet are like burnished bronze, says this. So the writer of the letter to Thyatira describes himself as the Son of God. Only here in the Book of Revelation is this title found, although it's implied in many other places. Since Psalm, chapter 2, Psalm 2, verse 9 is quoted later in the letter in verse 27, it may be that Psalm 2:7, "The Lord said to me, 'You are my son,' suggests its use here." So let's actually go to Psalm, Psalm 2. I keep saying chapter. And just reading through Psalm 2. This might, might present a certain level of relevance here. Psalm 2. "Why are the nations in an uproar, and the peoples devising a vain thing? The kings of the earth take their stand, and the rulers take counsel together against Yahweh and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us tear their fetters apart and cast away their cords from us.' He who sits in the heavens laughs; Yahweh scoffs at them. Then he will speak to them in his anger, and terrify them in his fury, saying, 'But as for me, I have installed my king upon Zion, my holy mountain. I will surely tell of the decree of Yahweh. He said to me, 'You are my son. Today I have begotten you. Ask of me, and I will surely give the nations as your inheritance, and the very ends of the earth as your possession. You shall break them with a rod of iron; you shall shatter them like earth and ware. Now therefore, O kings, show discernment; take warning, O judges of the earth; worship Yahweh with reverence, and rejoice with trembling. Do homage to the Son, that he not become angry, and you perish in the way; for his wrath may soon be kindled. How blessed are all who take refuge in him.'" Come on. Amen. Oh, yeah, everybody see how that ties into Revelation? Yeah, good? All right, that's a good, that's a good place to start there. So we have this reference to the Son of God, and then that's the link with Psalm 2, "You are my son," and that's gonna be quoted later on in actual verse 27. "In any case, it stands in strong contrast to the local cultic worship of Apollo Tyrrhymnos, which was merged with that of the emperor, identified as Apollo Incarnate, so that both were acclaimed as sons of Zeus." I mean, did you just hear that puzzle piece like click when it comes together? No? Oh, okay. So everybody with me, right? I mean, I don't know about you, like, I just kind of geek out over this. This is amazing. When you're reading through Scripture, and you know, like, I don't know about you, you just kind of, whether you're growing up reading it, you read it for so long, and you're just like, oh, that's pretty cool, you know, okay, and you just kind of keep moving on. But then, like, you're reading this, and it's like, oh, the Son of God, and then you find out that like, oh, who is the patron deity of the city? Apollo. Oh, yeah, and then the imperial cult, which has kind of been a big deal up until now, and then the emperor's worshiped as like Apollo Incarnate, right? And then, oh, yeah, the Son of Zeus, or Son of God. All those pieces just coming together, and it's like, oh, look at that. I mean, imagine, okay, imagine being in Thyatira and getting this letter, and it's just like hitting you right between the eyes. And so every time that maybe, and we talked about this a couple weeks ago, every time you're kind of selling out, and like, you know, to kind of like pay your dues for the guild, union, whatever, and so, you know, to like stay in, and maybe that was like burning incense to Apollo. And so now you have this contrast of the Son of God. Which Son of God are you loyal to? And just by presenting Jesus as the Son of God. Oh, man, and you know, and just, don't think about too much, it might give you nightmares, but like, if Jesus were gonna send a letter to us today, like, what would it start with? I mean, this is the opening, right? "The Son of God, who has flames of fire, who has eyes like a flame of fire." I mean, this is like the second line, and he's already just like, right there, right in their face. So, oh, man, this is something. Okay, so, too much coffee. I'm only a third of the cup in, so that's not it, I'm just excited about this. "So that both are acclaimed as sons of Zeus. Thus it's not the emperor or the guardian deity of Thyatira, but the resurrected Christ, who is the true Son of God. He is described as having eyes like blazing fire, and feet like burnished bronze." So both descriptions are taken from the initial vision of chapter 1, so let's go ahead and go back to chapter 1. Got to go backwards to go forwards, it's okay. Verses 14 and 15. So we have that description of Jesus in this part of chapter 1. "His head and his hair were white like white wool, like snow, and his eyes were like a flame of fire. His feet were like burnished bronze, when it has been made to glow in a furnace; and his voice was like the sound of many waters." In Daniel's Great Vision of the Last Days, chapters 10 through 12, the celestial being appearing, the celestial period, celestial being appearing to him as eyes like flaming torches, and legs like the gleam of burnished bronze. Daniel, chapter 10, verse 6. "The blazing eyes suggest the penetrating power of Christ's ability to see through the seductive arguments of Jezebel, and those who are being led astray by her pernicious teaching." Feet, or legs, like burnished bronze, convey the idea of strength and splendor. Can obviously take that to, you know, with the blacksmiths, the bronze smiths, and that were known to be in Thyatira. So once again, a very relevant personal connection that is being addressed. Any questions on that before moving to verse 19? Because Thyatira actually has some strengths to it.
In Revelation, or?
Yeah. Oh, just in, oh, sorry. So, so here in verse 18, where it says, "the Son of God," yes, that is the only explicit reference to the Son of God in Revelation. Just Revelation, it does appear in the New Testament. Yep, only one. And there's other places where there's like an inference made, but it's not as explicit as the Son of God. Okay, so what did the ancient idols look like? What size were they? Right? So, yes, they had massive statues and the temples to worship, but yeah, they would have had smaller figurines that they would have worshipped. I mean, I think I might have referenced this a while back, but like the movie Gladiator, there was little figures of the family that he was praying to, thinking that he could communicate with them on the other side. And so they became an idol, a representation of that being that had passed over. Same thing worked for deities as well. And so there have, they have found smaller figures like that, and then even just kind of more icons, where it was more in mural form instead of just figurines. So, follow up? Yeah, and that's, and that's one more area, yeah. So the idea is that like going into battle or traveling, you know, taking these gods with them, these figures, yeah, that would have been one more area that really separated the Christian from everybody else. Especially, you know, at a certain time of day, if they were to pray, or maybe in times of like duress, where, uh-oh, like, we're in trouble, everybody, get out your gods and pray to them, right? You know, I got Zeus covered, you take Apollo, or you know, whatever it might have been. And, or, you know, unless you're like, anyways, it's so, 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 yeah, the Christians just standing there being like, okay, you know, and just, just gonna pray, and that's it. Yeah, they would have definitely stood out in that regard. One more, just kind of practical, daily time of just being different. Absolutely. So, that's good, good. Love context questions like that, right? So, any other questions? All right, moving on. So Thyatira's strengths. So verse 19, "I know your deeds, and your love, and faith, and service, and perseverance, and that your deeds of late are greater than at first." So reading from Mounts here, the N-I-C and T, "The glorified Christ is well aware of the deeds that characterize the Thyatiran church. They are listed above as love, faith, service, and perseverance. The first two identify the motive forces of Christian activity, and the other two, the results that follow. While the love of the Ephesian church had decreased," chapter 2, verse 4, "the practical expression of love at Thyatira had grown." So you're now doing more than you did at first. So this rather liberal praise is explained by Sweet as a preface for the blame that is to follow." Backhanded compliment, if you will? So here's the weaknesses, verses 20 through 23. "But I have this against you, that you tolerate the woman Jezebel, who calls herself a prophetess; and she teaches and leads my bond servants astray, so that they commit acts of immorality and eat things sacrificed to idols. I gave her time to repent, and she does not want to repent of her immorality. Behold, I will throw her on a bed of sickness, and those who commit adultery with her into great tribulation unless they repent of her deeds. And I will kill her children with pestilence; and all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts; and I will give to each one of you according to your deeds." So, actually, before we get into 20, like, as we're encountering this, like with 19, we see the word deeds, right? And let's just recognize that we live in a time where our deeds are really kind of brushed aside, and we don't really talk about them too much. It's like, we still have this 500-year-old pendulum swing from Catholicism all the way to the other side, as the good Protestants that we are, right? And 500 years ago, it was definitely something that, you know, whether it was by the purchase of indulgences, or, you know, there was such a heavy, heavy emphasis on your works and a very works-based salvation, that that pendulum swung all the way to the other side in very much like a free grace movement, almost really what's being described in some of these other churches. Kind of a Nicolaiton movement of sorts. And I just want to address that, in that throughout Scripture, like, our deeds are important. They are absolutely important. And really, it's kind of a proof of who do we belong to? John talks about this extensively in his letters. Not just these letters. Not just these letters, his other ones. And it's important for us to recognize that and be comfortable with that, and to just to understand, like, what is being addressed here, right? And even in our own lives. And how is that impacting future generations of the church? In what we teach and how we communicate? How we encourage one another? Because what we say and what we do, it reveals who our loyalties are to. Is it the world, or is it to Christ? Is it showing love, or is it showing hatred? Are we condoning sin and encouraging it? Or are we promoting righteousness? And so we live in a time, I think, where a lot of these things are really getting confused, and dare I say, convoluted. And that there's error on the extremes of both sides. And so I, I think it's definitely something that as we're reading through this, I mean, Thyatira, good job, your deeds are of late are greater than at first. That's awesome. Verse twenty through twenty-three. I mean, twenty-three, he ends with, "And I will give to each one of you according to your deeds." I don't know about you, but when I hear that, I just naturally think negative, I'm like, oh, no. And, you know, reading through the rest of that, yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on. But anyways, I just wanted to just address that, that it's not something for us to gloss over, and especially, look at the emphasis that Jesus is putting on this to this church, to Thyatira. And I think it's definitely relevant for us too. So, beginning with verse twenty. "But I have this against you, that you tolerate the woman Jezebel, who calls herself a prophetess, and she teaches and leads my bond servants astray, so that they commit acts of immorality and eat things sacrificed to idols." So this has already come up in some of the other churches. And here it is again. So major attention is given to the self-styled prophetess Jezebel, whose seductive teachings had led some of the believers at Thyatira into fatal compromise and the secular, with the secular environment. The choice of the epithet Jezebel and references to sexual morality and eating food sacrificed to idols indicates a first-century parallel with the wicked queen of Ahab, who fostered in Israel the idolatrous worship of the Canaanite Baal. So let's go ahead and go to First Kings, chapter sixteen. You know what, I think I got that wrong. Oh. Huh, thank you. It came about as though, verse thirty-one. "It came about as though it had been a trivial thing for him to walk in the sins of Jeroboam, the son of Nabat, that he married Jezebel, the daughter of Beeth Baal, king of the Sidonians, and went to serve Baal and worshipped him. So he erected an altar for Baal in the house of Baal, which he built in Samaria. Ahab also made the Asherah. Thus, Ahab did more to provoke Yahweh of Israel, the God of Israel, than all the kings of Israel who were before him." All right, so, lot of bad stuff there. And then we have some bad blood going on between Jezebel and Elijah. So you can turn over a couple pages there, and you can get to Mount Carmel, confrontation there. Elijah flees from Jezebel, chapter nineteen. Let's see, verse, uh, chapter nineteen, verse two. "Then Jezebel sent messenger to Elijah, saying, 'So may the gods do to me, and even more, if I do not make your life as the life of one of them by tomorrow about this time.'" And so, the prophets of Baal who had died, who were killed. So, and it was enough to strike fear in Elijah. So obviously, very wicked and corrupting Ahab, introducing Baal worship to Israel. And even more wicked than any of the kings preceding them. So, "In a city whose economic life was dominated by trade guilds, in which pagan religious practices had become the criteria for membership, Christian converts would be faced with the problem of compromising their stand at least enough to allow participation in a common meal dedicated to some pagan deity. To reject this accommodation would mean social isolation and economic hardship. With her Nicolaitan orientation, the prophetess could suggest that since an idol is nothing at all," First Corinthians eight, four. "Believers need not undergo the privation that would follow from an unwillingness to go along with the simple requirements of the trade guild. Christ, however, speaks with great severity about any such compromise. Since they were unwilling to repent, Jezebel and her adulterous associates are to suffer greatly, and her children are to be struck dead." So, uh, let me go ahead and read on here. But is everybody, um, kind of tracking with this? This is that level of accommodation, that is, you know, as Christians in that culture. Well, you could, you know, an idol's nothing at all. You can go ahead and burn incense to it, you can go ahead, do whatever's required, because, you know, we don't want you to lose your job, we don't want you to be isolated, we don't want you to lose friends. Think about your long-term witness, you know, just... Oh, too far? And so, so, you know, it's one of those things, like, it's a challenge, right? It's a challenge for us to hear that and even think about that for us today. But look at the severity in which Jesus is confronting this. So, question? Well, so, I think when we are talking about companies and corporations, right? Like, as you are working for a company that is maybe accommodating certain areas of society, that is, like, not burning incense, you're not worshiping anything, but like, if there is condoning sin, um, to what degree is that part of your job? Directly, because, and that's what I'm saying, that like, because nobody was quitting, like, nobody quit being a bronze smith, because some people were making idols out of bronze. Do you kind of see that distinction? And as a Christian bronze smith, or blacksmith, like, you didn't have to make an idol. You could refuse to make that idol and have anything to do with the sin of somebody else, even though you were in the same trade. So, just where I'm sitting, if you are working for that company as somebody in the company deciding to condone something that doesn't necessarily have to reflect upon you. Now, that might be splitting hairs, but good luck finding a company, whether from the clothes that you wear or anything like that, that has not given money to something you disagree with. And, I mean, even, I mean, how, how far do we go with that? And where does that end? And so that's where I think that direct participation, and that's what's being talked about here. These people were offering a sacrifice to a pagan deity to continue association. And I think that's where it's clear. So if a company is requiring you to offer a sacrifice to a pagan god, I think that's a very clear line. I'm not even saying it won't get to that, it might sometime. Question?
Both the owner and?
Yeah, no, and I, I think if you are working for a company and something is requested of you, I mean, one, I, I just think you should have the freedom to accept or refuse work
Right.
Um, on whatever grounds. And, I mean, that, I don't know, I... But beyond that, you know, facing whatever penalty, yeah, I mean, it's, like, that's where somebody has to, you gotta find out what that, what is that line? And whether that is promoting, um, you know, not just a worship of pagan deity, or is it condoning or encouraging sin, promoting that? So, yeah. And, yeah, definitely don't hesitate to pray for guidance in that and what that looks like, but...
Then stay.
So, I, I'll say this, I, uh, just from where I'm sitting, I don't think we're more sinful today than ever before, I think it's just out in the open. So, regardless of what has happened over ten years, twenty years, thirty years, fifty years, whatever, uh, there's always been sin. And whether it was done in secret or whatever else, um, you know, and, or left to, you know, certain circles or whatever. Regardless, this is where we find ourselves. And this is where we need to know and understand the truth and stick to it, hold to it, be discerning in how we live our lives. I think on one extreme, you have the Amish. And then on the other is probably just where we're at. Homeschoolers are right in the middle, I'm just kidding. And so, uh, we homeschool, like, and I just made all the cliches. Um, but, um, you know, I, I think it's important for us as a society, and wherever we find ourselves in, to really kind of step back and just evaluate every aspect of our lives. We don't have to have one of these. And many of us got along just fine before they ever came along. But many of us now can't imagine our life without it now. And so that is where we have created those attachments, and even society is built around those attachments. And so, but once again, stepping back, is this drawing me nearer to the Lord or away? Now, it, in and of itself, is a neutral thing. But that's where we need to be discerning. Nobody's making anybody watch TV or movies or participating in whatever it might be. Or even working at a certain company. You are completely free to quit your job tomorrow. And see what happens. If you're married, please consult your spouse. But, you know, it, it's just, like, I think a lot of times, it's easy for us, and I'm glad we're talking about this, and yeah, I joke about like trying to get me in trouble, um, but... Well, we'll just make sure David's watching the, uh, YouTube comments and everything. But it's, it's important for us, like, as we're reading through this, to really think critically about it, and what does this look like for us? Because it's easy, it's easy just to do Bible study and to put everything back on the shelf when we're done, and see you next week. Instead of, what does this mean for our lives? And I mean, seriously, like, how many times did the church in Thyatira read this letter over and over? Maybe they made it a ritual part of their Sunday gathering, and so they read it every single week. And maybe Jezebel, whoever that was at that time, was the one saying amen the loudest. Because obviously, her name was probably not Jezebel, that'd be way too obvious. And so, but, you know, like, and, and that's a lot of times, like, when we do Bible study, we're just filling our heads with knowledge, and it's not translating into our lives. Like, this letter is kind of a kick in the teeth. And I think the Lord really meant for each of these letters, to some degree, to produce action. Action in a believer's life. And so we can run that through the filter of our lives, and this is kind of the, uh, devotional aspect of it, we can understand it in its own context, we can translate it into our context. What does that look like? Where is the Jezebel in my life? Where am I compromising? Where am I being a Jezebel in my life? It doesn't have to be somebody else, you could be it, right? And so where am I compromising? Where am I teaching other people to compromise? So it's just a really, like, it's a deeper challenge for each and every one of us. And, and it doesn't have to be the same as the collective majority of Christians that you know. If the Holy Spirit is leading you and guiding you in that change, maybe you're the spark that's gonna set off other people, just kind of freeing their minds of like, oh, you know what, I've kind of had that little, like, nudge deep down in my gut to like, I need to change something, but you know what, now I know what that looks like. And all we need to do is be faithful and take that step. And because maybe that's gonna set something off in, in your friend groups, or wherever it might lead. All to the glory of God, right? Because we decided to not just study Scripture, not just read it, and not just study it, but to also translate it into our lives. Because that is what the Lord is looking for here. I mean, Jesus isn't saying this and giving this to John to, like, clear his conscience, or to like, whoop, got that one done, Father told me to do it, done. No, it's because he loves us. It's because he loved the church in Thyatira. And he wanted to see them repent and change from what they were doing, the trajectory that they were on. Well, let's go ahead and get started here. After my soapbox, I have a couple of, uh, potential identifications for Jezebel, um, as suggested by Mounts. So, we have, some have suggested Lydia, the seller of purple from Thyatira, who was converted to the Christian faith at Philippi. Oh, scandalous. Acts, chapter sixteen, verses fourteen and fifteen. "While as a businesswoman, she may have faced some of the same problems to which Jezebel encouraged, an antinomian response." So antinomian, like anti-law, anti-legalistic. There is no substantial reason why we should identify the two. So, uh, so, so, that was just some, somebody had suggested that along the way, it's being included here. Um, probably what that boils down to is somebody needed something for their PhD, or... And they came up with this theory, there you go. Yeah, yeah, definitely using this, uh, yes. Uh, so, the, the term, the word, name, Jezebel, is being used more as a title, uh, for this Jezebel, right? Instead of, like, yeah. In the same way that we don't have a bunch of Jezebels running around here today, you know? I mean, names, anybody named Jezebel. And not here, not here, not in this place. Just digging, digging the whole. Have you started recording? Uh, so, thanks David, that was subtle. Um, to, uh, so that Jezebel herself was not a prophetess, but a self-proclaimed prophetess. That's right. So, okay. A scholar named Schur advanced the view that Jezebel may have been the Sibyl Samba, uh, whose sanctuary was outside the walls of the city, and apparently in existence at the time of, when Revelation was written. This view is unlikely, and that is doubtful, that the religious syncretism of the day would have infected the church. have infected the church to the point that a Sibylline priestess could also function so effectively within the church itself. So the opportunity for repentance suggests someone from within the church who had gone astray, rather than a female fortune teller from the pagan world, coming in and, oh, fortune telling is just my day job. So, once again, not likely. That would have been really a peculiar scenario there. One variant, reading translates your wife, Jezebel. So instead of the woman Jezebel, your wife, Jezebel, which would make her the wife of the bishop or leader of the church at Thyatira. The one who this, kind of, under the idea that the angel, to the angel, right? That angel being the leader of that church. Anybody remember that possible translation or interpretation of angel? So that it was the wife of bishop or leader of the church at Thyatira. As the variant is improbable, so also is the identification. The Thyattiran Jezebel is probably some prominent woman within the church who, like her Old Testament counterpart, was influencing the people of God to forsake loyalty to God by promoting a tolerance toward and involvement in pagan practices. So this extended to sexual immorality and participation in the religious feasts connected with membership in trade guilds. So Jezebel symbolizes the corrosive powers of false religion among the people of God. So it is questionable whether her teaching was in any sense formal. It may only have taken the form of popular persuasion built upon unexamined assumptions. In any case, it had seduced a considerable number of believers into a fatal compromise with paganism. While that purgament, antinomianism, had made its way into the church and affected some, chapter 2, verse 14, at Thyatira, it was aggressively promoted by a prominent woman claiming the gift of divine prophecy. Since the eating of food sacrificed to idols is undoubtedly intended to, in a literal sense, it is best to take sexual immorality in the same way. Pagan feast often led to sexual promiscuity. That was also a part of the worship. So, eating food sacrificed to idols, sexual immorality, those things go together with the pagan feast.
Her actions led to what we?
Yes. So the question is, the question is that, like, Jezebel, who was the wife of Ahab, was that actually her name, or was that a title? No, that was her name, but she was so wicked that forever after, to be referred to as a Jezebel, was to insinuate, like, the level of wickedness that she promoted.
Play.
Okay, so in regards to the theory that this Jezebel woman was possibly the wife of a bishop or leader of the church in Thyatira, and with the understanding that men were definitely the primary in, you know, relationships and in society, how would that have reflected upon him? Or would he have been part of that wickedness and everything else? Okay, so a few things here. Because what we see, like, just like with Lydia, so first, okay, first I'm going to address the role of women in ancient society. Because a lot of times, we just assume that it was just men running the show, carte blanche, like, you know, there was no competition there, there was no, it wasn't necessarily like that at all. Because you had women owning property, running businesses, you know, the neck that turns the head of the empire, you know, the emperor himself, right? And we see that, like, time and time again, even in Rome, but, you know, and especially even within the church. What we see in the New Testament church is that gift of prophecy, not just for men, but also in women. And so there are a number of times. And now sadly, what we have recorded is when some of that, for men and women, when that goes off the rails. When there is all kinds of heretical stuff being communicated by divine revelation. And so, but we have men and women being called out for that. And so, so really, if you want to think about that, like, if somebody was a prophet or prophetess in the early church, like, that was a major influencer. A leader, kind of in their own right. And so we even see deacons and deaconesses, and so, so it's a little bit, there's a, there's much more of a female presence in leadership, in society, at multiple levels. So it's not just completely taking a backseat to men. That being said, if there was a bishop who had a wife who is being referred to as a Jezebel, no, that would not have looked good at all. That would, like, I am just trying to reconcile, like, what that would have even looked like. Because there would have been a, I mean, had to have been a formal denunciation of her role within the church, he would not have kept his position for very long. As that would have come out as, you know, there must have been something to, and mind you, like, I'm sure if this Jezebel was a part of the church, I wonder how well she quoted Scripture. Right? Of, from, you know, their Bibles, the Old Testament, what that would have looked like? Or maybe it was certain interpretations of prophecies, or whatever that might have been, to lead people astray. And so maybe there were some really just good sounding things, maybe it was, all right, hot water, here we go. But like, maybe it was an idea of like, hey, for the gospel's sake, go ahead and go to that pagan feast. Just don't sleep with the women, or don't sleep with, don't have sex with the men, or whatever it might have been, you know? And so all of a sudden, you're seeing these degrees of compromise. You know, a lot of times, you know, what we're thinking when we're saying Jezebel is like, oh, go for it, Jesus died for you and all your sins. And, you know, at some level, like the Nicolaitans, that could have been the message. But it could have been one even more diabolical, and you know where that word comes from, and so, because of last week. And so, because what is being promoted here is compromise. Now, more likely, compromise within the guilds, right? And so there was a sacrifice to the God of that guild to maintain participation in work and everything else. But part of that is these feasts. And so that's just compromise at multiple levels, and it could have all sounded good. It could have all sounded super-Christian. For the sake of evangelism, go and eat meat sacrificed to idols. What's an idol? And trust, I mean, we could rationalize that. We could totally rationalize that. I mean, Paul was encountering that. And we don't live in that kind of society. I mean, man, could you imagine if that, we had, you know, temples and idols and all that around us, and then we're having that conversation? Whew, man. And yes, yes, we can make everything an idol, or anything an idol, blah, blah, blah. No, I'm talking about like shrines and idols and, where people, like, the majority of society is bowing down and offering sacrifices and different things like that. To the point where, you know, we're worried in corporations and, you know, having not the same values as we do, but no, no, what if they were outright devoted to a pagan deity? And then they're requiring your allegiance? And so then there's somebody, a church leader, or somebody receiving divine revelation, to say, no, no, it's okay. It's okay. Listen, you go and show them Jesus. Love them well. Eat the food they put in front of you. You don't have to ask where it comes from. And, you know, when, as it gets night, or, you know, if you're not comfortable with that, you just go home. But Jesus died for you. And so you just do whatever the Spirit's leading you to do. Oh, we can convince ourselves of what the Spirit's telling us, right? And so, so there's all kinds of those traps, and it just, it sounds good to the ears, but you're just completely being led astray. And so if she was a bishop's wife, oh, man, just by her position, by his position, and then her even having a reputation, or even calling herself a prophetess, and maybe not being refuted by her bishop-husband, ooh, all of a sudden, her words have credence. I mean, it just happens like that. And it happens, you know, it can happen in churches today. As issues come up, and I mean, church leaders are human too. Everybody's, you know, pastors are human, everybody's got their struggles, and, you know, elders too, and, so, you know, it's one of those things that, I mean, we've got to be serious about what we're doing and how we're living. Kind of goes back to the deeds conversation, right? And not just studying and filling our heads, but just getting serious and being like, okay, I'm approaching Scripture? Is everything on the table? Is everything on the table willing to change? If you're a Bible study leader, please, start out your next class that way. Everything on the table? Everybody, we ready to do this?
It's okay.
How much time do we have?
Open up a can opener here.
Oh, boy, yeah. No, 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 this is, and, you know, even got referenced this morning too. Okay, so the question is, so excited, my mind's just already there, you know? And so, so the question is, would they have had idols of Yahweh at this time? That's so, that's such a great question. Okay, so, so would they have had idols? Now, this goes back to the moment the Israelites came out of Egypt, right? Like, the whole golden calf, that wasn't Baal or Baal, that was Yahweh. They identified it as Yahweh. Now, it gets a little bit more complicated than that because, because at that time, ancient deities, Canaanite and even some Egyptian stood on the backs of calves. Ooh. So what if it wasn't a cow, but they were worshiping the invisible God, but they were doing it in a pagan way? And that level of syncretism is not okay. So that'll preach on its own, we'll just leave that one there. But what happens later on, by the time of the divided kingdom in Jeroboam, what does he do? Because he doesn't have Jerusalem within his territory in the north, and so he goes, ah, I got an idea, there's historical precedent for this. So he makes two golden calves, puts one at Tel Dan and the other at Bethel. And he goes, and he quotes Aaron from the book of Exodus, behold, Israel, Yahweh, who brought you up out of Egypt. So, this is not a new thing as it comes around, right? Now, what we have by the time of the first century, like, syncretism happens. We've already done it, we just don't really know how we've done it in our lifetime. Now, it might not have been with pagan deities per se, but we have synchronized, at its newest point, 2,000-year-old document, into the 21st century. We've done it. Now you're thinking, like, how have I done that? Well, that's, I'll leave you with that one. But with Yahweh, and in the first century, what we see is not so much Yahweh, but Jesus. And we see that syncretism. Now, not so early on as this. We don't have any writings that really show that. But later on, there is an identification with Jesus and Mithra, or Mithras, who was kind of a Zoroastrian, like, sun god. And then we also have an identification with Apollo. So each of those come about later on. Constantine, there's all kinds of other stuff with that. And so, so yes, it does happen later on, but not here. Because remember, like, even within the first century, still very Jewish. And I think that kind of keeps things on the right track for a little while. But when we have this huge influx of Gentiles, and just, I mean, imagine, you're like continually bringing in pagan, you know, people who are raised pagan, and you have this group that is maybe growing up Christian, but it's still a minority. And so everybody else coming in grew up completely pagan. And so what thoughts and what ideas are they bringing into this? We're not going to go any further, but. Yeah, so, 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 to short answer, not yet at this time for idols. And not necessarily idols of Yahweh. There would still be much more of a closer identification with Jesus, but we don't see that for another 100 years after. So.
He dodged the bullet on that.
No, no, I bet that one.
What about all the icons that they make in the?
Ah, that's where I stopped. What about icons? And yes, that's a great question. So.
Because I actually own it. Just to be clear.
Don't win me, Jim. So, you know what, I have my take on icons, I understand, you know, I've read plenty on, and talked to people on their perspectives of how icons are utilized as kind of a help for prayer, and visualizing who they're praying to, they, you know, and most people who have icons believe that just as God hears our prayers, Jesus hears our prayers, so all of the believers who have passed on before us, they hear our prayers too. And so, kind of part of the church, capital C. And so by praying, and you can enlist the prayers of all these other people. And to help you with that, they'll have pictures of each and every one of them. And they'll have pictures of Jesus and pictures of God, and, and even though that's probably not what they look like. You guys know I'm a little bit old school, and by old school, I mean Old Testament, and, you know, just the whole graven image thing, I just can't get past that. And I understand, like, I love church history, I understand how all of these things developed. I understand that even in the tabernacle and later in the temple, there was imagery. The difference is, they were never being prayed to or used as a visualization in direction of prayer. So that is where I separate those things out. And I do not believe those things are of the Lord or intended for believers to possess and use. So, there you go. Any other questions?
Your idea.
Okay, if you just missed the last two minutes, I just got a question of, could Jezebel have been promoting eternal security? And this, as I'm choking, Jim up here was kindly, kind enough to point out that, this study was your idea. So, we will talk about the idea of eternal security next week. No, no, it's going to come up, it's going to come up, it really will. And I don't think that is in view in the text, just because it's food sacrificed to idols and sexual morality specifically. So I understand where you're going with that. So I understand where you're going with that. And, you know, and kind of the blood of Jesus covers all. You know, so, so it's really more in line with the Nicolaitan. And we don't see even the whole once saved, always saved, or eternal security as being a part of even the Nicolaitan talk, it was much more a less developed theological approach. So, that's all I'm going to say about that for right now. You are going to see that much more with Augustine. So it's a few hundred years later. So, yep. The question was, didn't know, David's laughing at me. So, Harry just asked, the second part was, didn't know if they had started teaching it that early. And it's primarily going to be from Augustine later on, who introduces that idea. So, any, any other questions? I know, I know, but I'm here for you guys, so. Yeah, 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 no, that's a fair question. What is the church's view on that? The church actually does not have a view on that. So in our seven points, Statement of Faith, you know, we kind of stick to those, and so major on the majors, minor on the minors. And that's It's a big one. It is a big one. And so, there's different views, we have people from different backgrounds attend, and we let that, you know, that discourse happen. But if it is or isn't, how does that shape your life? If you believe in it, and it causes you to sin, I suggest you stop believing in it. Or really, really evaluate what Jesus Christ means to you, right? And if you don't believe in it, and you are worried going to bed every night, thinking that you're going to go to hell, once again, let's think about what does Jesus Christ mean to you? So, I think it's, you know, the church does not have a stance on it. Scripturally, I think we can see scriptures supporting it from both sides, or supporting it and for it and against it. So, now, we're going to encounter some things here in the next couple of letters that's going to be, pose something of a challenge to that too. As Jesus even saying blotting you out of the book of life. Like, Jesus makes that threat, I don't think he's bluffing. And so that's going to be interesting when we encounter that, because like, whoa, he's talking to a church, talking about those who are maybe participating in a certain sin. And so anyways, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And just because this has come up, maybe I'll do a little bit more research and kind of trace that back and see how that idea is developed, and even the scriptures for and against it. Okay? And that's generally how we tackle things here, is as these theological issues come up, it's just looking at what does the testimony of scripture say? Yeah, yeah, well, and that's, and that's, and that's exactly like the point I'm saying is that like, a lot of times, if we have grown up in church, and this is all we know, it has shaped our perspective without even us really like knowing and recognizing it. And so then we encounter somebody else of a different belief and like, oh, you're wrong. Because this is all I've ever heard all my life. Well, that's all they've heard their life, right? And so, so imagine that, take that, translate that into being raised in a pagan culture. Where food sacrifice to idols and sexual immorality was commonplace. Think about that. And then you're coming into the church. And I would, I could bet that this Jezebel is probably not Jewish. It's probably from a Gentile background. A pagan background. And is saying something that maybe all of the other Gentile people with a pagan background. And it's just tickling their ears, and they're just like, hey, that sounds good. I'm with her. So, because that's all they've ever known. That's what they were raised with. So, I know, it's just such a stretch, because it's just not the culture we've grown up in. So, all right. Okay, so, I've got 20 minutes left. I want to present like this interesting connection that I found, okay? Are you ready for this? Not as psyched as I am, so, okay. So, Thyatira was an ancient Greek city called Pelopya. And, ready for this? Simaramis. Anybody ever heard that name before? Simaramis. Okay. So, all before it was renamed to Thyatira during the Hellenistic era in 290 B.C. by King Seleucus I. Decatur. He was at war with Lysimachus when he learned that his, oh yeah, yeah. So, that was just the part where it means daughter. But, Simaramis, so I recognized this name, and I understood, like I remembered the pagan association, okay? So, so Thyatira was at one time called Simaramis. So that's the connection. So I'm going to read about Simaramis, and you just kind of see what maybe could apply to this Jezebel figure, okay? Simaramis is a, and this is from the World History Encyclopedia. Simaramis is a legendary queen thought to be based on the historical Samuromat, who lived from 811 to 806. Ah, that's not right. Well, I don't, obviously don't have the date, but historical Samuromat, the queen regent of the Assyrian Empire, who held the throne for her young son, Adad Nerari III, until he reached maturity. She is also known as Shamaromat or Samuromat. She is referenced by several ancient historians, including Herodotus, Diodorus Seculus, and Plutarch. It is not known what year she married the king, but when her husband died, she took the throne, she was able to provide the nation with stability, with the stability that it needed. Historians have speculated that since the times seemed so uncertain to the people of Assyria, the successful reign of a woman would have engendered a kind of awe greater than that of a king because of it being so unprecedented. She was powerful enough to have her own obelisk inscribed and placed in prominence in the city of Ashur. So I mean, it's a big deal. What exactly Samuromat did during her reign is unknown, but it seems she initiated a number of building projects, and may have personally led military campaigns. Scholar Stephen Burtman sums up most, if not all, that is known of her reign in a single paragraph. Okay, you ready for this? Simaramis was the wife of Shamsi Adad V. and the mother of his successor, Adad Nerari III. She took the extraordinary step of accompanying her husband on at least one military campaign, and she is prominently mentioned in royal inscriptions. Thanks to embellishments added to her biography by later Greek historians, she became the most famous queen of Assyria, legendary for her beauty, cruelty, and sexual appetite. Other ancient accounts, such as those by Diodorus Seculus, also seem to have combined earlier accounts of Samuromat's reign with myths and legends relating to the goddess Astarte or Ishtar in Nana. So that in time, the historical queen became the mythical semi-divine Simaramis. So, you have a ancient queen of the Assyrian Empire, no less. Deified in her own right. And so Ishtar, there's out of Babylon, there's all kinds of transference here. But sexual immorality being a part of, especially in the worship of Ishtar. Some people, I'll just throw this out there. No, I won't, okay, I'll save that one. I'll wait till after next Sunday. And so with Ishtar and Astarte, with that pagan worship, generally fertility being in focus. Some of you don't like me right now. So anyways, but with that level of influence, I just thought that was really fascinating for this Jezebel figure to be mentioned, and this, the connections with Simaramis, and especially with the city itself, that being its older name. So, that's kind of interesting. It really does, doesn't it? Yeah, so like all that, yes, multiple layers of that connection. And so I'm just surprised, because it wasn't in any of the other commentaries that I had read. And like, this is the world encyclopedia, and so World History Encyclopedia, I was like, what? No way. So, anyways, there you go. But I'm sure there's plenty of smarter people that would tell me why that's not a connection. But, but I'm just throwing that one out there to you guys, and everybody on Zoom and YouTube. So, yes. Before Thyatira, so 800, so it would have been around the 800s B.C. Yeah, yeah. That's why I'm disappointed, I, man, yeah. So, but yeah, around the 800s B.C. And so that would have been plenty of time for her to be really like famous and known, and then for somebody, maybe somebody migrating over from, you know, Assyria to like maybe plant this town or whatever. So, yeah, I don't know, I thought that was a fun connection. So, all right. Okay, opportunity to repent. Repent, all of you. Chapter 2, verse 21. "I gave her time to repent, and she does not want to repent of her immorality." "So participation in the guild feast with its penchant for licentiousness would involve the believer in yet another kind of immorality. The concept of religious infidelity under the figure of harlotry is common in the Old Testament. 'Do not rejoice, O Israel, for you have played the harlot against your God.'" So Hosea, chapter 9, verse 1. Also Jeremiah, chapter 3, verse 6, Ezekiel 23:19, there's so many. "The fornication of which Jezebel was not willing to repent was her adulterous alliance with the pagan environment. She had been given time, perhaps by John, to repent, but had refused." Remember, like John is the elder, the eldest elder of these churches. So still kind of maintaining that is his influence, his disciple making that has established these churches, and that he is continuing to encourage. And so maybe that as John is receiving a revelation, as he's presenting a revelation, Jezebel is presenting her own. So now you have like this level of competition of who is hearing God. And so here is the word to repent. Now, here's where we get the judgment oracle. So this is verses 22 in the first part of 23. "Behold, I will throw her on a bed of sickness, and those who commit adultery with her in a great tribulation, unless they repent of her deeds. And I will kill her children with pestilence. And all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts." So, so remember here, we're talking about like a couple layers of this Jezebel. It's the religious harlotry, but then it's also, what that includes is food sacrifice to idols and the sexual immorality. Both of those things are a part of this religious infidelity. So all of that is kind of a package deal. "So severe punishment is about to be meted out to Jezebel and her adulterous associates. She is to be cast onto a bed, and they will suffer intensely. The bed is not a funeral buyer, or beer, or a dining couch of the guild feast, but a bed of sickness and pain." So, basically, there would be the bed in which like the dead body would be laid upon, but then there's also the dining couch, so at the field, the guild feast, they would have been partying, and in that part of the world, the couches, the tables, I'm sorry, would have been only like 12 to 16 inches off the ground. And so everybody's reclining on pillows and cushions and living it up. And so you kind of have this, you know, this idea, instead of a party, a bed for that, or even the funeral, it is a bed of sickness. So they are going to be at home, sick in bed. "Disease as a punishment for sin was an accepted view. Paul wrote that participation in the Lord's supper in an unworthy manner was the reason why many of the Corinthians were weak and ill, and some had died." 1 Corinthians 11:27 through 29. Let's go there. Starting at verse 27. "Therefore whoever eats the bread or drinks the cup of the Lord in an unworthy manner shall be guilty of the body and the blood of the Lord. But a man must examine himself, and in so doing, he is to eat of the bread and drink of the cup. For he who eats and drinks eats and drinks judgment to himself, if he does not judge the body rightly. For this reason, many among you are weak and sick and in number sleep." 1 Corinthians 11, starting at 27, reading through 30. And that sleep there is not a good night's rest. It is dead. So weak and sick and in number sleep. But if we judged ourselves rightly, we would not be judged. Paul's thoughts on communion? Yes, question? So there's many of those I am statements throughout, and yes. It's, it's not necessarily, did I repeat that? Okay, so the I am statement, so you're reading from Last half of 23, and all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts.
It's not capitalized, so I'm assuming it's not
Right, yeah, and so the question is, does the I am signify like Yahweh, or, you know, or, yeah, the great I am, right? And I am translates Yah, like in Hebrew, but we're not reading Hebrew, we're reading Greek. And, and so, now, that being said, contextually, you really just have to evaluate whether it works or not. It's not fair to just take every time I am being together as Yahweh. There's a tendency, like for those who know, want to do that, but it's not fair to the text itself. So, in this instant, I don't lean that way. Because it's I am he. The emphasis here is he who searches the minds and hearts. So it's already kind of in that flow, so, yeah. Oh, that's a great question, that's good. So, okay, I got six minutes left. So, all right, so, where am I? "The parallel structure of the two main clauses sets bed over against intense suffering. Jezebel's associates in adultery were all those she had led astray within the church. It appears that her time for repentance has passed, but that they still had the opportunity to repent of her ways." Verse 23. "The promise of certain punishment continues. Jezebel's children are not the literal offspring of her adulteries or a second generation of heretics, but those who have so unreservedly embraced the Antinomian doctrines of their spiritual mother that they are best described as younger members of her family. The killing of Jezebel's children may reflect the bloody occasion The killing of Jezebel's children may reflect the bloody occasion when the rulers of Samaria murdered the seventy sons of Ahab and sent their heads to Jezreel in baskets." 2 Kings, chapter 10, verses 1 through 11. We only have five minutes. I would read it. I would. 2 Kings, chapter 10, verses 1 through 11. "If a distinction is to be drawn between the children of Jezebel and those who commit adultery with her, the latter would be those who flirt with her teaching, and the former, the totally converted." It's much more in line with, yes, yes, yes. So the question is, is there significance to them repenting of her deeds instead of Jesus just saying repent of your deeds? And I think the emphasis here is on Jezebel and her level of influence. And then secondarily, those who accept that influence and who are committing those adulteries with her. So I think the focus is on Jezebel. And now it's kind of sliding to everybody else that's in participation with her. Because, I mean, remember, this is getting read to the whole church or in the individual house churches. And so it's recognizing that like she's being dealt with. You guys have an opportunity to repent. As you're, as we're reading through this, we are recognizing our loyalty to Jesus and recognizing John's role as an apostle and his carrying the word of God to us. Let's repent of even listening and keeping Jezebel within our fellowship. So, I mean, which really, you think about that in like maybe a house church format or something like that, like wow, there's some hard conversations happening. Because I mean, imagine Jesus calling out what has maybe been there for maybe a short time or maybe a couple of years. But it has done the damage and now it is being confronted. And maybe if it was the bishop's wife. Ooh. Right? So, yeah.
People start reality with the reading this, this letter. Everybody turns around, looks at the same.
All right. So just a little bit more here. "The persuasive logic of the comprises, compromisers had confused many in the church at Thyatira, but imminent punishment would demonstrate that the one who searches the hearts and minds of people had found them guilty. Each is to receive according to his or her deeds. Through the prophet Jeremiah, God expressed in the clearest of terms the principle of divine judgment. I, Yahweh, search the heart and examine the mind to reward a man according to his conduct, according to what his deeds deserve." Jeremiah, chapter 17, verse 10. "It is restated both by Jesus, the Son of Man will reward each person according to what he has done." Matthew 16, verse 27. "And also by Paul, God will give to each person according to what he has done." Romans, chapter 2, verse 6. And then the second part there. "I will kill her children with pestilence, and all the churches will know that I am he who searches the minds and hearts, and I will give to each one of you according to your deeds." All right. We will. No, I got, I got too much left. Okay. So we will pick up with verse 24 next week. "But I say to you, the rest who are in Thyatira." So we'll start there, further words for the faithful. Oh, not next week, not next week. The week after that. David's going to edit. And so. So anyways, yeah, not next week. So everybody have a wonderful holiday next week. And then the week after that, we will meet same time, same room, everything. So, all right. God bless you. Have a wonderful week.